And we are live.
All right, thank you, everybody for joining tonight. This is a calling the meeting to order. This is a special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County of Cochise, State of Arizona. This is being held on Thursday, July 8th, and it's at 7:02 PM by Zoom. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak is excused. Councilmember Jody Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
There.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson is excused. Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here's.
Okay. City staff Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Joel Anders, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chavez, Police Chief, George Castillo, Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
All right, thank you, everybody. For a moment of silence tonight, I know it's been quite an ongoing thing, but I think we give a minute of reverence to the victims and their families of the big condo collapse in Florida, in Miami. I also hope that we keep in mind the first responders. I did one of those, and it is quite something to dig through a pile looking for, you hope, first, live bodies, but many times you come up with ones that aren't. And it's a very, very hard thing on our first responders, but not harder than on the families of the victims. So let's give us a minute for that. Thanks. All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on, a few announcements tonight. We're going to take a couple of minutes and just recognize two of our, well, actually, three of our employees, two for longevity. We have a five-year longevity award and a tenure. And then, of course, an acknowledgement from our illustrious library person that they won, or she won, but another award for our library. So Joel, do you want to take it from here? That'd be great.
Yes, please. I would like to ask Jason Macovia, the library manager, to introduce and share Allison's accomplishment.
Sure, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm honored to be here to do this. So each year, the Library Journal recognizes individuals around the country who are not only excelling in their library professions, but they're actually moving their donations forward with exceptional results. And with that in mind, it's actually no surprise that Allison Williams was honored among this year's movers and shakers and was named the Partnership Queen for her ability to create community partnerships that actually bring us much-needed funds into the library through grants, donations, and other awards. And being among this elite group is such an honor, and I couldn't be more proud of Allison as she continues to make giant strides in her position as Library Services Coordinator at the Copper Queen Library. This past year was especially challenging for all of us, and that is why the Library Journal focused their attention on individuals who went above and beyond their jobs in the middle of a pandemic to deliver much-needed library services to their communities. Allison rose to the challenge, keeping the spirit of the library alive when our actual physical building was closed to the public, with her innovative programs that kept the community connected, safe, and engaged. Her passion and commitment to providing the best library services to our patrons has not only helped place the Copper Queen Library in the national spotlight, but it's also helped us to place us in the hearts and minds of our actual community and patrons who move and shake us every day to be the best that we can be. So on behalf of the Copper Queen Library and the City of Bisbee, thank you, Allison, well-deserved, and congratulations. We are so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And next, I have a longevity recognition for Raul Hidalgo in our Public Works Streets Department for 10 years of longevity, and I will let Mr. Haro say a few words.
Thank you, Joel. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am honored to speak about Raul. He's been with the city for 10 years as of July 28th. He currently serves as our Streets Department Lead. He also serves as our basic, our expert in all of our concrete. He's the one that we do whenever we have anything that we need. He knows how to do concrete work extremely well. His historical knowledge is extremely valuable to the city. He is one of the longest-tenured people within the Public Works Department. Couple of the projects that he's been involved in, he started the, him and a few other people started the pavement preservation program some time ago, prior to that. There was a not so, wasn't as organized as it is today, so grateful for that. He also led the Gay Beyond Drainage Project in the Santa Cruz Wash. In addition to the contributions that Raul has provided the city, in the Streets Department, our Streets Department typically completes all of our maintenance on the buildings. So we definitely are grateful for that. Again, extremely grateful for Raul's contributions to the city and the Public Works Department. No where we will be without him. So again, thank you for, thank you to Raul.
And Joel, if I could just add a couple of words to that.
Please.
Because Raul was around, the first time I worked here, he came to work for us, and he was one of the fortunate guys who got to work for the Street Department during the recession when we were down to two people. And I think the other person at that time was Matt. And the two of them performed a lot of tasks in the course of a day that really made them stand out as model employees for the city. And I also wanted to add one more specialty, because on Saturday, he was standing on the roof of the senior center in the middle of a thunderstorm, so he could watch and see which way the water was going, so that we could isolate the leak that was going into the AAA wing. So I am one very grateful person to know him and have him working for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Pocken. And I worked with Operations Manager Matt Gurney, and he got me a piece of cutting edge, I think is what it's called. And my husband welded a stand, and we got a plaque to put on it for him. So this is a one-of-a-kind piece, and we'll get that to Raul on Monday.
Great.
Okay. And then we have a longevity recognition for our Reserve Police Officer Tommy Montgomery, who has been with the city for five years. And I will let Chief Chavez say something.
Good evening, Mayor Council. With me tonight is Reserve Officer Tommy Montgomery. He's been with us for five years now. He came to us initially as a full-time position, and then went back to his other employment, but has been with us for the last five years in that reserve part-time capacity. And he's been somebody that this department has come to rely on, not only to do a job well done, but also to come in on his regular days off to come and help us out and to help us complete the mission here. And we're very grateful to him, and we just want to extend our congratulations and thanks to the last five years.
Yes, thank you very much. And Officer, oh. And Officer Montgomery, my apologies. I left your certificate at the office, and I'm doing the meeting at home. So I will get that to you on Monday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Tommy.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's what makes our city click, is all the employees that we have and the dedication that it takes, because we can't give them maybe the money they deserve, but I sure hope, at least, we can say thank you for a couple extra times. So thank you, everyone, and to Allison, and to Raul, and also to Tommy. So thank you. All right. Next item will be Call the Public. We have a few things here to be read, so I will, again, let Joel handle those.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Budge. Because of the reschedule of the meeting, I'm going to read the name and then the date, which it was received, just so we cover all the bases. So I'll start with Sonia Hernandez, who missed the June 6th meeting and asked for this to be read this evening. "To Bisbee City Council, I am a commuter for the past 17 years from Bisbee to Sierra Vista, six days a week. It would significantly slow traffic, especially for those of us whom come from San Jose, which is now down to one lane of traffic each direction. If you get behind a person who is going well under the speed limit of 45, which is typical, it would not allow people to pass until the lower interchange. I honestly believe it would also cause more illegal passing and accidents. I do not believe it is a 45-second delay, as some have mentioned this in the information being circulated. Please consider this in all your decision-making for this bike walkway path. Thank you for your time, Sonia Hernandez." And Rose Hall, Monday, July 5th. "Please implement the bike path Plan B for the sake of Bisbee citizens that are trying to use less fossil fuels. Simply enjoy riding their bikes or walking, or have no other means to get around town. People dying from being struck by cars on that dangerous road is such a horrendous oversight by the city. Let's finally make our town safe for walkers and bicyclists. Thank you for your consideration, Rose Hall, Bisbee resident since 2009." Lauren Jennings, Monday, July 5th. "City Council, I am writing in regards to how strongly I feel you should adopt the shared-use path lane around the pit. As a resident of Warren, I feel it will have three main impacts on Bisbee. One, reduce deaths around the pit. How many more bicyclists have to get hit? Two, make Warren and Old Bisbee feel more connected as one community. Three, promote healthy alternative transportation. Please consider all of the positive impacts this pathway will have on our community as you make your decision. Thank you, Lauren Jennings." Molly Herico, Monday, July 5th. "Hello, I am hoping, I hope I am sending this to the right place. I am out of town and cannot attend, but the Bisbee shared-use path is very important to me, and I am hoping that my input will make a difference. Thank you so much. As a lifelong resident of Bisbee, an avid bicyclist, the daughter of an avid bicyclist, and the mother of an active young person raised in Bisbee, I would eternally, I would be eternally grateful to all those who hold positions which enable them to see that the Bisbee Bike Ways project be built and completed in a timely fashion. I believe wholeheartedly that such a shared-use pathway would not only create a healthier community, offering many interested citizens various life-enhancing activity, increase tourism opportunities, undoubtedly bringing money into our local economy, as well as prevent further unnecessary deaths in our town. I support the implementation of Bisbee Bike Ways Plan B, as well as the use and allocation of funds from the legalization of recreational marijuana. I thank you for your time and attention to this very important matter, Molly Herico." Carl Stetter, Monday, July 5th. "To whom it concerns, I am writing in support of the shared bike path around the Lavender Pit. This is something we shouldn't even be debating on, as we have already had one tragedy this year. Please approve this project. It will benefit our community in so many ways going into the future. Thank you, Carl Stetter." Roberta Brack, Tuesday, July 6th. "Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing in support of Agenda Items Number Five and Number Eight. A dedicated, a person dedicated to finding grant and other monies to move forward the bikeway transportation plan would do a lot towards creating safety for our citizenry and promoting an interesting and healthy tourist attraction. Plan B on the bikeway is the only option that seems safe and functional to me for drivers, as well as cyclists. Thank you for your hard work you do for our little city, Roberta Brack." Kay Schmidt, Tuesday, July 6th. "We definitely need a safe way to connect Warren and Old Bisbee. Going around the pit is dangerous but doable. Cars do get close. Semis seem to be the ones that get over. As for allocating marijuana for road projects is a great idea. It's a big if. I see folks, tourists included, walking on the skinny walkway and rock-filled sidewalks no bike can ride on. Try running on it. You don't feel secure. A big plus for our town is Yell's Project and would bring folks and their money to our town businesses. Tired of folks getting injured for no reason. In other states, these multi-use paths are a welcome, welcoming sight and used." Alex Hernandez, Tuesday, July 6th. "I have lived in Bisbee all my life, and just until recently, I have noticed recently that Bisbee Council doesn't seem to care about the original people that made this town. Now you guys accommodate all of these outside to rule this town and make it to what they want to see here. Look at the city pool, took out a volleyball court to put in cricket ball court and workout that only a handful of people use. I remember seeing kids and adults use the volleyball court. Then whoever let you buy their way in for what? To take away from your youth in this town. For who the old people with money that move into this, to this town carens? As for the bike path, there is not enough people that walk or travel the pit to accommodate this bike path. What may be 10 to 20 people a week? Think about how many cars crash to that side of the road where you want to put people. More people will be in danger on that side of the road. Bisbee don't need a bike path. They need a place where Bisbee youth can grow and have fun. Our youth is more important. They are future here. Put a new park in San Jose, splash pad for the kids. Anything for our youth, not a bike path that only a handful of people use." Ben Lepley, Tuesday, July 6th. "Dear Council, I wish to send my full support for the grant writing, Item Number Five, for funding to continue progress on the shared-use path on Highway 80 around the pit, Item Number Eight. It was only a month ago we lost a second bicyclist along that stretch. The only road separating Warren and San Jose from Old Bisbee. I would encourage the continued study and improvement of the design strategy, especially if it maintains an uphill passing lane, tourist parking, and has some additional land given from Freeport where possible. Eminent domain is a tool meant to further the public good and could be employed in this case. Even if the above changes are not possible, Design B, as presented, will work if funded by the USDA. Just remember, this is the only means for people to go from one part of town to another. Not everyone always has a functioning car or a driver's license. This stretch is deadly and in dire need of improvement, so that transportation around our city becomes equitable for all residents of our city regardless of income level or whatever you, whether you work the night shift or day shift. Please do not table these items. There is a plan and momentum already that needs to remain in order to meet the grant funding schedules. Old Bisbee resident, Ben Lepley."
How many? Two more. Two more, okay. I thought it was ten. I thought, okay. Allow up to that many. Go ahead, lead the last two and we'll be done.
Okay. Jennifer Graham, Tuesday, July 6th. "Good afternoon. As a 20-plus-year employee of the government, I have learned to always look at the highest and greatest use of public funds. I do not believe this project is either. We have too few funds. I do not feel this is where they should be placed, as it will not serve the greatest number. Thank you, Jennifer Graham." Elena Ryan, Thursday, July 8th. "Good evening, Mayor Budge and Bisbee City Council. I appreciate your taking the time to read my concerns. I have a concern regarding the bike pathway around the Lavender Pit. Instead of removing two lanes of traffic, which in my opinion would completely disrupt the flow of traffic, my suggestion is to, one, make sure that the sidewalks are in, that the sidewalks that are in place are clear from debris and shrubbery. Two, there is a sidewalk that goes from Old Bisbee to the pullout at the Lavender Pit. Put a stoplight there with a button and crosswalk that will stop traffic so pedestrians can cross the highway from the sidewalk into the Lavender Pit pullout. Then they can move across the area to pick up the remaining sidewalk that will go down to Lowell. As a reminder, the decision that you make regarding this bike pathway will affect the entire city of Bisbee. Please do not make a decision without having a public meeting where people can come in person to express their concerns. I also ask that no decision be made regarding City Hall on Arizona Street until the public can meet in person to discuss this matter. We, the people, elected you. Therefore, we should have a say regarding the changes that affect the citizens of this great town. It is time to have public meetings again. A lot of people do not know how to use Zoom or do not feel comfortable participating in this forum. Thank you so much, Elena Ryan." And I do have 10 additional emails in support of Item Number Five and Item Number Eight, but they are very much the same, but I have them all printed and ready to give to Ashley for the record.
Great. Thank you, and then we'll have some speakers when we get to the actual items. All right, everybody, thanks for chipping in on their Call the Public. So moving on to general business, we'll do Accounts Payable. Do I have a motion for Accounts Payable?
I move that we pay Accounts Payable in the amount of $244,648.99.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Anna, a second by Frank, to approve Accounts Payable in the amount of $244,648.99. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jacomino.
You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. I should have asked if anybody wanted anything, you know, any questions on it? Does anybody have any? I'll entertain those. All right. Yep, just trying to get through tonight. Thank you, everybody. So moving on to Item Number Two is the approval of the Consent Agenda. Tonight, we have eight items. One of them, of course, is the minutes of one of our previous sessions. We have four board and committee assignments or resignations, and three park and facility use permits. Would anybody like any one of them pulled? Oh, Ashley?
Here, we do have somebody signed up to speak for Item 2G.
2G. Okay, we'll pull Item 2G at this point. Any council member would like to pull any other item? Say none, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items A through F and H.
Second.
I have a motion by myself, a second by Anna, to approve the Consent Agenda, Items A, B, C, D, E, F, and H. Any? I'll just take a vote on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to the One Consent Agenda, Item G. This is approval on park and facility and right-of-way use permit for various streets, parking spaces, and staircases, along with the Higgins Hill Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 16th, from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Why don't we go ahead and take a public comment?
We have Andrew Laws. Mr. Laws, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Laws. You have three minutes.
I think I muted you again, Mr. Laws. Try to unmute yourself one more time, if you would.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yes.
All right. Well, I actually had signed up for the Call to the Public, but that's fine. I can wait till Item Eight. But I did want to say, I support what Elena Ryan said about, you know, I think it's well time to go back to public meetings. So anyway, I appreciate her saying that. So on this agenda item, you know, you guys are well aware of my complaints about the sign painted on the wall next to my business that, in my opinion, is an illegal sign. It's advertising an event that no longer takes place, and it, you know, should be falling under the category of a temporary event sign that is supposed to be removed within a short period after the event is over. And it causes a great deal of commotion in front of my business. People yell really loud to the people going up the stairs, because usually groups of people see that sign and come over and think it's an invitation to treat it as a little amusement area. And they yell at the other people that go up, the ones that don't want to go up, stand at the bottom and yell. And I'm doing delicate jewelry work inside, and somebody's yelling at the top of their lungs. I could actually, could cost me serious damage to something I'm working on. So, you know.
Do you have anything on the actual park and facility use permit, Mr. Epp?
I have, I have that, because this is something you guys don't want to talk about, and this is the only appropriate forum to where I'm saying you should make her clean up her illegal signage before you give her a new permit. You know, it's really unfair. It's, you know, that particular sign is an event that no longer takes place. And I will say that I never objected to that event. I objected to the bullhorn being used in front of my door during the event. I asked them to please stop using the bullhorn. I didn't say, "Don't do the event." And so, you know, I get no cooperation for any consideration of any, you know, things that should be no brainers, that should be easy to see that, you know, this is common sense respect of your neighbors. And so, you know, I put that little sign up. It's like an eight-by-eleven sheet of paper that just said, "Please respect the neighbors. It's our only access to our houses." And I think it's incredibly, you know, rude on top of rude, on top of more rude, that the city manager sends the Chief of Police to tell me to- that the city manager sends the chief of police to tell me to remove my little paper sign. But you guys don't do a thing about the one painted permanently on the wall. So, you know, I'm gonna keep mentioning it and mentioning it and mentioning it and, you know, maybe you guys will get sick of it and actually do something. I doubt it. But thanks for listening at this time. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council, mayor? From the council. Seeing none, I'll make the other motion to approve consent agenda item G. I have a motion by myself, a second by Anna to approve consent agenda item G. We'll have a vote on that, please.
Member Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously five zero. All right. Thank you. Moving on. This will be a first bit of old business. This was a motion that was tabled at the last meeting. I had it lifted from the table. This is a discussion of possible approval of the permanent extension of premise patio permit application submitted by Electric Brewing. This is located at 1326 West Highway 92. We have a letter that I think clarifies some of the questions. Do we have any other concerns or anybody who would like to speak to this? I think it was Joanie or last time, you were wondering how they laundered them out and they seem to be okay with it. You have any other? Something you'd like to say?
No. I don't think it was me, but that's okay.
Oh, maybe I'm, maybe it was, I don't know. Okay, it was three weeks ago, see? Oh, Anna, do you have, does this lessen your concerns?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that they were okay with it because it does affect their business as well. And if they're okay with it, then I guess we should be okay with it, too.
Great. So, I'll entertain a motion unless there's somebody else would like anything to say.
I move to approve the permit extension of the premises patio permit application submitted by Electric Brewing located at 1326 West Highway AZ. Okay.
I have a motion by Frank and a second by Anna to approve item number three. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns. Mayor Pro temp line.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, everybody. Now on to new business. This will be item number four. This is a personnel announcement. This is about a retirement of a very long and dedicated employee. And this is a presentation, so we'll let our chief of police, Albert, if you would like to present this, or Jolene, Joel, Joel. Either way, whatever works.
Police chief.
Yep, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Council, members of the public. It's my pleasure to speak to you today about Sergeant Stephen Gardner. Stephen Gardner has dedicated 24 years to the city of Bisbee, to the Bisbee Police Department. He rose to the ranks and has been retired in good standing as the sergeant with us. We are grateful for the time that he gave us and we wish him well in his future endeavors and his retirement. Some of which we'll still get to see because he is elected to stay on board with us as a reserve part-time officer. So that is a, it's a sad day for us that he's retiring. But it is, it is good that we will still be able to retain and rely upon that institutional knowledge that he's gained over the last 24 years. And so, we just wanted to acknowledge that. We felt, Joel and I discussed it a little bit, felt it was a little bit more than just an announcement and probably be more appropriate to have an agenda item. And for that, I thank you, Joel. And, yes, so I just, I just want to acknowledge that. He's not here with us right now. He's actually on his way back from Oregon. Had a little road trip after his retirement, first, fourth of July that he got to spend not in Bisbee. So, I'm sure he had a good time, but, yes, we just want to keep him and his family in our thoughts and are grateful to the time that he gave us. And look forward to his part-time reserve time for years to come.
Thank you for that, chief.
Thank you, chief. And I'll get this to you to get to Sergeant Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Yes, Anna, go ahead.
I would just like to add that I also appreciate all the years that Sergeant Gardner has given to the city. And we have talked about his retirement for, you know, many years. I just didn't think it would come so soon. And I've enjoyed working with him when he was a resource officer at the school district. We had a lot of laughs and, but I've always enjoyed, you know, working with him and I'm happy that he's retiring. I'm happy for him. I'm not happy for us. But to learn that he's going to stay on as a reserve, that really makes me happy. So at least we'll get to see his smiling face. And anyway, I just, I just wish him and his family well and I hope he enjoys his retirement.
We wish all of our long-term employees a happy retirement. It's a great thing to have behind you. But yet, you still get to be involved in the community. That's the best of both worlds. Any other comments? If not, we'll move forward. All right. Thank you all. So, let's move on to item number five. This is discussion of possible approval of a job classification for community development planner. Ashley, did I goof up?
No, not at all. We just have somebody signed up to speak for this.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I jumped an item or something. Then let's handle the public comments. Well, maybe you present it first and then we'll just take a public comment and then we'll discuss it. So, Joel, do you want to present it or Steve just?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Budge and council. Today, I'm bringing forth a job classification for a community development planner. This position is dedicated to research, write, and manage grant opportunities for the city of Bisbee. Also address the city's current planning activities and including the workforce housing initiative in order to service and assist the citizens in a timely manner. And also, to, another benefit would be to reduce some workload from other staff members who have taken on the deadlines of the workforce housing. There's, I mean, we've all bought houses and there's a lot of paperwork involved and that's happening. And so, to be able to have someone dedicated to that that task will be wonderful. And also the time involved in the design review board and planning and zoning commission. The meetings, preparation, things of that nature, a lot of times. So again, it'll be nice to have a position where someone is dedicated to those duties. And I can take questions. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Pocken.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add a couple of things. The day before I came back to work for the city, which I believe was around April 14th, all of us had a discussion about what was going to happen when I came back on board. And at that meeting, I had explicitly mentioned the fact that I was going to ask you if we could institute and hire a planner since we hadn't had one in, well, a good number of years. And at that time, the specific discussion that we had had to do with most of the things that Joel has listed in her comment on the CAF. But I want to emphasize that the demands of the things that we talked about that this planner would do came into existence in the last few years and were driving the workload of the city manager and driving the workload of the city billing inspector to a point where a lot of other items that are considered day-to-day functions of those positions to be a little impossible to do. So, I know there's other discussion out there with regard to what this planner should do. The fact is that, you know, writing grants is a standard line in every job description that pertains to planning. There is no specific item in there that calls for transportation planning. However, there will be no doubt in my mind that at times that the planner will be asked through the city manager to do things that pertain to some of the transportation activities that have been discussed in the community and by council. And by that, I just want to say a little bit more directly that this position was not contemplated for the purpose of doing a bikeway or a bikeway system. So, I want it, I want it to be clear that this person isn't going to work on bikeways first and everything else second. There are a lot of pressing priorities and we have to handle those priorities in the fashion which they come before us. So, with that, I really appreciate the fact that you've cooperated with the staff in helping us put this position together. The only real hurdle that we've got to cross after this is hopefully approved tonight is finding a place for that person to work. So, and we are ready to advertise a position and pending your approval this evening, we'll start advertising tomorrow.
You can have the mayor's office, though.
When I find it.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's take any comments or people that are signed up to speak to it.
Megan Conley.
Go ahead, Megan, if you're on, yeah, on mute.
Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor and council for your constant dedication to make Bisbee a better place. I know it's hard work to weigh out, identify, and act on all the priorities of the town because there are so many of them. Just to let others know in the community that I was born and raised in Bisbee and graduated from Bisbee High School. I have been working on the bikeways projects for a couple of years now. And I'm doing this for the kids of Bisbee. To me, it's a priority to do something about the climate crisis. I'm trying to create alternative options for people to get around town and not use their cars. I'm very concerned about that for my daughter. And also concerned about safety. You know, we have two deaths, Sergio and this next day. This is, this is nothing that needs to happen again. And I also want to just say that we've collected 15 letters of support from residents, the city council, the school district. We have 23 letters of support from small business owners. We've done online surveys. We've conducted intercept surveys. We've identified 45 full-time jobs just from the lavender pit study and huge economic gains. El Tour de Zona is a bike tour that can bring 1,000 riders to town who are estimated to spend $40 to $50 a day. That's $40,000 to $50,000 just from one tour. So this is a clear pathway to economic development. This is something that I feel very strongly should be a priority for this position. And I understand that the workforce housing was already, you know, moving forward because they were able to get that MOU and move forward with the previous city manager and she did move this project forward. But my point is this is a priority for the town and it will create economic development. And so, I really want to make sure that this position is going to focus on making this happen. Not just the lavender pit pathway, but all the pathways in the Bisbee area mobility master plan. Because as we know, we have to coordinate with Freeport to get that done. Someone has to do that work. Otherwise, it's going to sit there. And we're willing to do this. Stephanie Peavy and I were willing to write the grants, but we need someone at the city who is focused on getting this done. So, I appreciate, you know, your direct statement to me. And I understand that, you know, you guys had this discussion. I do think it would be good to add as a skill set that this person has multimodal planning. You want to get someone with the right skill set. The way it's set up, they're going to focus on the housing. So, if you don't choose to make a motion to add multimodal planning to this job description, then please make it very clear that this person is going to make these bikeways a priority. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we have anything else on the, on this one, Ashley?
Not that anybody signed up for.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open up discussions for the council. Anybody want to speak to the job classification? I mean, I'll start off by basically saying there's representative job duties, but it's really the summary that speaks to me. And the summary basically says it's administrative direction. Administrative direction comes from the mayor and council. So, we give whatever direction we give, that gets pushed down and, you know, with coordination. But it's direction on plans, organizes, performs professional planning work. Administration prioritizing schedules major projects. So, whether it's bikeways, whether it's housing, whether it's the Hillcrest situation. And of course, every single month, board, DRB and the Planning and Zoning Commission, those are duties that have to go on all the time and then hopefully will work some grants and get some money in there to help push these forward. So, I think it speaks to what it is that we want is this person will be a professional planner and prioritize and schedule major projects under the direction of the city manager and as we as mayor and council may ask that to happen. So, that's my vote, two bits. Joanie, go ahead.
I just want to say I'm glad to see that this position's coming back. The grant writing aspect of it is needed big time. It's unfortunate that it was removed by past administration and I think it, its removal had really affected our growth as a town. And now that we're putting it back in, I think all projects are going to benefit. You know, the bike path and all the ones that you mentioned also. But I'm glad that Steve has stepped up to reinstate this position because it's a very important position.
Well, you're the one that's going to step up next.
I also agree with everything that Councilmember Giacomo, what she said. I just want to say that I'm really, really pleased that Mr. Pocken has worked to bring this position back. I remember when, why, and by whom this position was eliminated. So, I'm just glad to see it. We really need it, especially now. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Frank, go ahead, Frank. Yep.
Yeah, I would just chime in with Joanie and Anna. I am very glad to see this come back. I think it's very important for a town to improve our situation, to have a grant writer. There's money's out there and that's the way to get them. So, that's great.
Hey, well, Leslie, you're the, you can bring it to the back.
Um, I just wanted to say that I, in my mind, these projects all kind of dovetail. You know, I think that the bikeway path is a path to economic development like Megan was saying. And I also think that the workforce housing initiative is a pathway to economic development. It's bringing people into the town and helping them gain economic stability and also what we're doing. helping them gain economic stability and also what we're doing with the Hillcrest could also um gain economic stability and bring that to town. And I think if this person, you know, I think we can find all that in one person. And, you know, I trust Steve to, you know, um guide this person to work on all of these projects. And I think if we find the right person, you know, they can prioritize and and make the job work. And I'm really glad. I'll just echo what everyone else is saying that this job is back.
Yeah, it's it's to handle these major proj- projects that we just don't have the staff for right now and they and they do go languishing sometimes and I that doesn't move us forward. And as we come out of this pandemic, I see a lot of an interest and money coming into town and we need to be sure we do it right and not just uh nilly-willy. And so we need, I'm I'm pleased that we might be able to find someone with all these skill levels to 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 help guide us through this planning because it's a it's a specialty um profession. So uh, see, anything else? I'll take a uh a motion to uh approve this job description.
I move to approve the job classification for community development planner.
I second that.
We have a motion by Anna, a second by Frank, to approve the job classification for community development planner. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes five zero. All right, thank you, everybody. Um, we'll be moving on to.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you uh getting her done. Let's now get out there and find that right person. We don't get to, we don't do the hiring. You do the hiring. And Joel will do the the announcements and get us some good applicants. So, all right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we are moving on to item six, which is the discussion of possible approval of park and his facility and right-of-way use permit for the use of the city pool by the Boys and Girls Club in the summer party. This will be on July twenty-second from ten AM to two thirty PM with a waiver of fees. Um, it's pretty well speaks for itself. If you want to, it's got Ashley's name on it, but uh I didn't. Yeah, go ahead, Jesus. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Uh, members of the council. It does really, it speaks for itself. Uh, the only thing that I would like to add is that uh they are requesting this is a private party, which will require us to um close the pool um on a day uh that we regularly are open. So I just want to make sure that that uh that you all are aware that if this if this is approved, uh we will be closing to the public and this will be a private party.
All right, uh Joni, go ahead.
I do have a question, but also a statement as far as what you just said, Jesus, in the past, that's what's always happened. So if anybody shreds you, just remind them you're just following with past history. Uh, are you gonna have enough guards perchance? Or are you gonna try to?
Yes, we will have enough. We will have enough lifeguards. However, um I will have to be one of the lifeguards. We are running a little short now towards the end and I am certified. So what's in order to put this on, uh, I I will have to be a lifeguard.
Okay.
All right. I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to give the kids their last pool party. Anybody wanna?
I just. I move to approve the park facility right-of-way use permit for the use of the city pool for the Boys and Girls Clubs end of summer party on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one from ten AM to two thirty PM with a waiver of fees.
Second.
Thank you, Frank and Anna. A motion by Frank, second by Anna. Uh, I know we don't need a roll call, but if you do that, then it gives me time to zoom down to the next one.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes five zero unanimous. So we have one more. This will be pool permit or park permit. This is item number seven, discussion of possible approval of the park and facility and right-of-way use permit for the city pool for the library summer reading program pool party. This is the next night, which will be July twenty-third or next afternoon. This will be from twelve PM to two PM. Again, with a waiver of fees since it is something that we as a city are doing. It's basically the same, Jesus, just uh different, different providers. Uh, I imagine we'll we'll make sure we have the same lifeguard situation here too, right?
Yes, it is. Yes, we will.
Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing on quickly, I'll just make the motion that we approve the permit, park and facility use permit for the use of city pool for the library summer reading program pool party July twenty-third from two PM, twelve PM to two PM, twelve noon to two PM with a waiver of fees.
I second.
A motion by myself, second by Joni, to approve this park facility permit. Um, go ahead, Ashley, if you would.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns. Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Uh, motion passes five zero. Right. Got the easy ones. Let's get the next one, which is item number eight. This is the presentation, discussion and possible action on the shared use path feasibility study. I'll turn this over to city manager Park. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mary, and good evening again, everyone. Um, this is the uh uh shared biking path feasibility study that has been ongoing for a considerable period of time. By this time, um, the uh consultant for the project, uh Mr. Brent Crowther of the Kimley Horn engineering firm is here with us tonight to give us a presentation. And I also want to add that uh assisting uh from a staff perspective, um on this project over the last few months uh have been Christine McLaughlin, who is a county planner, as as lo- is as well as her boss, Dan Dan Coxworth. So um, there has been some professional planning and engineering put into this project uh which has led to the final report uh which included some public input sessions. And at this point, I'll introduce uh Brent Crowther. If you'll unmute your microphone, sir, and we'll turn over the presentation to you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Just really quick, Brent, just a second. Um, we do have some people that want to speak to this. Um, maybe they would like to, they could speak now and then the presentation and we can discuss afterwards, or would you rather have the people speak after the presentation? Uh, I, the presentation may answer some of their questions, so um I'm just seeing if the preference. Why don't you go ahead, Brent, and we'll just maybe I'll answer their questions. It'll be easier for them to uh to ask anything at the end of at after your presentation. So I just want to make sure we recognize we have people that still want to speak to this. Thanks, Brent. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and and share my screen if I can.
Son of Bisbee, an avid bicyclist, the daughter of an avid bicyclist.
You'll want to speak to this. Thanks, Brent. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and and share my screen if I can. Hey, you seeing that? Okay? Okay, so I thank you for for the opportunity to be here and and discuss this project. Um, what I'd like to do this evening is 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 I identified here on this slide, we'll give you a little bit more project background. Describe the planning process that we followed over the past few months, including the the project objectives and and evaluation criteria and how we I develop our concepts. And then we'll jump into a discussion of 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 our of our project and and recommendations. We'll summarize a public input that has received, that we have received. Um, discuss the final recommendation as well as an overview of economic benefits uh that may be obtained from this project. And then we'll have an opportunity for any comment and and discussion from the council. Uh, as you are all aware, this project uh was a funded through a grant received uh from the US Department of Agr- US Department of Agriculture. And the purpose of the grant was to conduct a feasibility study along SR eighty between the the downtown district and the Lowell district. Um, the purpose to provide a a safe facility uh for for folks to walk and bike, approve quality of life and serve as a catalyst for economic development. You can see here uh on the left, I'll get in, I'll show a larger map of our general study area between historic Bisbee and the and the Lowell district. A lot of work has been done laying the foundation for this effort, including the recent Bisbee area mobility master plan. It identified a a network of shared use paths. Uh, this uh particular SR eighty pathway is is a core element of that old plan. Um, SR eighty is a is a a critical linkage, not only multimodal, but vehicles and and others connecting uh connecting Bisbee. Uh, SR eighty is also part of what is called the Sun Corridor Trail. And when um ultimately finished, it will extend all the way from Las Vegas to Douglas. Um, in at the beginning of of our project in January of this year, we did an initial survey uh to get an indication of of how residents felt about current walking and bicycling within uh Bisbee and particularly on SR eighty. You can see some of the results here. Uh, a vast majority said they were very unsatisfied with conditions for bicycling on SR eighty. And and well over a majority, sixty-four percent likewise very unsatisfied with conditions for walking. Uh, eighty-six percent of the respondents said they would ride or walk this particular segment of SR eighty if they felt safe and protected from uh adjacent traffic on SR eighty. Here is is the focus area of of this of our feasibility study. Uh, the concept, the concept that we will present to you uh begins here in the Lowell district and and passes on the uh the south side of SR eighty, adjacent to the lavender pit, uh terminates up near the uh historic Bisbee uh near the Queen Mine Tour and into downtown. And you can see some of the the key landmarks here. The lavender overlook is right in the center of the segment. Um, and then we have Erie Street down at the south end and Queen Mine Tour parking up at the the west end. Our project followed essentially six steps, uh tasks that we we completed over the past few months. We first uh document our current conditions. Then we went out for community input and that was uh the input that I previously described that we did in January twenty-twenty-one. Then we worked with our technical advisory committee to prepare a pathway concept. We took that back out to the the public in May of this year uh to get comment. We then refined that concept based on on the comment and 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 input we received from our technical advisory committee. Then documented that in our final report. Our technical advisory committee was was comprised of of the city of Bisbee. Um, Jesus Haro was on, was our tack as well as city manager. Uh, we also had representatives from multiple uh departments, uh divisions from from ADOT, including the southeast district, uh the district engineer Bill Harmon. We had the ADOT Southern Regional Traffic, James Gomes, and the ADOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator Donna Lewandowski. We also had a great participation from Cochise County. We coordinated with FMI, uh briefed them frequently on on the status and the concepts. Uh, had input from the Urban Land Institute as well as Bisbee Bikeways. Our project schedule here uh that we followed, we 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 initiated the project back in in November. Um, and here we are. Uh, you can see where we we did our our public meetings here, one in January, another one in May, and then we are culminating here at the end of uh June um twenty-twenty-one. You all recognize what the current conditions of the pathway look like. Uh, this photo on the right um was taken as part of our our field review, our corridor tour. It's a very narrow strip of concrete. Um, it's it's less than what would be uh constructed as a standard sidewalk with today's uh today's uh standards. Uh, it's barely two to three feet wide enough for uh just a a single person to barely hang on to that uh as a as a walk along SR eighty. And it's it's that way where there is sidewalk, that is the general uh width of the sidewalk, very narrow uh results in 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 folks walking uh directly adjacent to traffic. We also have four traffic lanes, two lanes in each direction on SR eighty. So as we developed the concept to rectify that that condition, um, some of the the priorities that we had, number one is safety. What type of facility would provide a safe facility for for bicycles? And the motoring, the motoring public. We wanted one that provided the connectivity to to the critical destinations being um, we wanted to connect to to historic Bisbee. We wanted to connect to the lavender pit. We want to connect to uh down to the Lowell area. A multimodal comfort. Uh, we want the pathway to be used by pi- bicyclists and pedestrians, those walking, whether it's for recreation, for work, um, whatever their purpose. If it's not comfortable, if they don't feel safe, it won't be used. We also considered aesthetics. Uh, we have uh some some concepts within the plan to uh incorporate public art and um make it an interesting uh um community amenity. And that could include branding uh mixed in with that public art. And as has been mentioned, it really is an opportunity to to provide a uh a key element of of tourism and promote economic development. Some of the engineering uh considerations, we we looked at traffic impacts. We have uh current data on traffic volumes and how many lanes are needed to accommodate both future, both current and future uh traffic volumes. We looked at right-of-way. A key element was was uh being able to construct the pathway within the current easement and and right-of-way, so we don't have to procure new right-of-way or minimally procure uh right-of-way to implement the pathway. We also wanted it to be reasonably uh fundable. Um, something that we can pursue grant funds for that was within a a reasonable budget that uh can reasonably uh like funding identified for. And again, those those elements of multimodal user comfort and then making sure it's equitably accessible for all residents of Bisbee. The 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 concept that we um have proposed, um, we've actually proposed what we're we're calling two concepts. Those cons- concept A and concept B. They are identical from the east end of the pathway from Erie Street to the Queen Mine Tour area. Uh, it's in that Queen Mine Tour area to historic Bisbee is where those concepts diverge. And I will show those in a bit more detail in a few minutes. Both concepts provide one travel lane in each direction. So taking the four lane, uh two lanes in each direction, reducing that to one lane in each direction uh separated by a two-way left turn lane. And that two-way left turn lane facilitates uh entering into the lavender pit that facilitates entering into the driveways uh that access uh FMIs uh access points along SR eighty. Both concepts in incorporate a raised curb or a concrete barrier that separates a shared use path from that eastbound travel lane. And you can see two highly simplistic uh renderings of of what the the overall concept may may look like, where we have one travel lane in eastbound direction or westbound direction, a two-way center left turn lane, a travel lane in the westbound direction. Then we have a buffer area and then we have our shared use path. In the areas where the travel lanes, where where we reduce our right-of-way width, uh, we're not able to provide uh as much of a horizontal buffer. Uh, we we are providing a vertical buffer to provide that that separation. Um, both concept, as I mentioned, I incorporate a two-way left turn lane. Um, as you can see here, reconfiguring from four lanes to one lane, one lane in each direction with a two-way center left turn lane. Um, the that the two-way left turn lane is important for a number of reasons. Um, it does improve multimodal comfort. Um, as as we know, um, high speed, high traffic is is not comfortable for motorists or for bicyclists and pedestrians. The reduced number of lanes do provide a visual cue for for folks as they're entering the Bisbee area to 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 maintain an acceptable speed that is is safe for bicyclists and pedestrians. A two-way center left turn lane provides room for for vehicles to pull into the shoulder. Um, we, a vehicle that's traveling We, a vehicle that's traveling westbound up the hill, for example, could pull over. And there's enough room for an emergency vehicle to pass in combination with the shoulder and the two-way center left turn lane. And then the two-way center left turn lane accommodates left turn movements to the lavender pit and to the FMI driveways. This is an example from Tombstone, Arizona, that has a similar configuration. One lane in each direction, separated by a two-way center left turn lane. To give us some context of traffic volumes within the area. This is an exhibit of traffic volumes in SR eighty, east and west of Bisbee. We have two lanes east of Bisbee and daily traffic volumes is about five thousand seven hundred vehicles per day. Two lanes west of town, we have about fifty-two hundred vehicles per day. And two lanes south of town where we're at about eight thousand vehicles per day. And then this table here shows traffic volumes within this segment adjacent to the lavender pit. So over the last seven years, we've ranged from eight thousand vehicles per day, very similar to what we have down south, down to in twenty twenty, for obvious reasons, our lowest traffic volumes of the last seven years at about six thousand vehicles per day. But you can see pre-pandemic, we ranged from sixty-five hundred on up to eight thousand vehicles per day, all within the range of facilities that also accommodate the similar traffic volumes on two travel lanes. Two-lane highway can actually accommodate multiple traffic volumes of what we have currently. A two-lane highway can accommodate around fifteen thousand up to twenty-one thousand vehicles per day. This slide is showing some of the benefits of reducing the speed limit that we would suggest would accompany implementation of the pathway. If we reduced the speed limit just by ten miles per hour from forty-five miles an hour to thirty-five miles per hour, miles per hour, we would be increasing our travel time from Erie Street to Queen Mine Tour by less than a minute. And that's just math, forty-five miles an hour, one and a quarter miles equals a hundred seconds of travel time as opposed to one hundred fifty seconds of travel time. So you can see that the overall travel time better impact is fairly modest by the reduction in speed limit. Another important part is recognizing the safety benefits of reducing the speed limit. The graphic here shows the likelihood of survival for a pedestrian that is hit by a vehicle. Ninety percent of the time, a pedestrian that is hit by a vehicle going just twenty miles an hour has a ninety percent survival rate and that decreases to just twenty percent at a forty miles per hour. So again, showing that linkage between vehicle speed and the conducive and safe environment for bicyclists and pedestrians. So now I'd like to get into just reviewing the concept in a little bit more detail. I'm just going to pull up the PDF plans here of the pathway. Okay, so this is what we're showing is concept B of the shared use path. The pathway begins down here at Erie Street, down here on the east end of town, where we begin the pathway here. The terminus, a ten-foot pathway. And you can see here we have the eastbound and westbound travel lanes. And into Erie Street, we actually have a dedicated right turn lane. And as we move up, so we're headed, let's see, did I skip too many there? Okay, as we head up towards the west on Erie Street, you can see that we take the pathway and we actually transition from behind the back of the curb as we get near the mine and we have our
You're sharing your screen as much as you used to be.
Sorry, yeah, I was trying to wait a few, but
Okay, sorry about that. Let me, I think I probably picked the wrong application here. Okay, you seen that PDF now?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, why don't I start over there then? So here we have the intersection down here at Erie Street where we have the dedicated right turn lane. And then adjacent to one travel lane in each direction, separated by a two-way center left turn lane. And here we have the pathway as it terminates here at Erie Street. As we head to the west, the pathway transitions from back behind curb as we approach the mine and it's just not feasible, there's just not space to keep the pathway behind the curb. We transition to behind the existing, adjacent to the existing curb within what is currently the eastbound travel lane. And we maintain that configuration here. You can see the shaded is our horizontal buffer area, curb. And then where the right of way narrows down, we transition to this symbology here is for a vertical curb or our vertical barrier is I showed in that other cross section. We maintain that vertical barrier through the next several hundred feet as we continue. Let's see. I may have to close a file and reopen it. Okay, let me, let me, having problems, let me close that file and reopen it here. Okay, you seen that? Okay, again? So we maintain the vertical barrier here for the next several hundred feet until we approach the lavender pit overlook. And then at the lavender pit, we take the pathway back behind the curb into what is currently the lavender pit, the lavender pit overlook. And here we have some renderings of some potential landscaping that we could include within the area. And you show we have a right turn lane for vehicles entering the lavender pit. And one of the key elements of this concept is we are consolidating that currently we have two access points in the lavender pit. We are consolidating into a single driveway access point into the lavender pit overlook. And then once we proceed, continue to the west, we enter back into the street adjacent to the existing curb. And we continue further to the west. And here we gain enough right of way where we have that horizontal barrier as opposed to the vertical barrier. And we maintain that configuration as we continue heading to the west. And here we have driveway openings at some of the key access points for FMI. So they're able to access their facilities. We may continue to maintain that configuration as we get up here around the curve. And then here we're approaching the Bisbee Queen Mine Tour area. And this is, I'm showing concept B where the pathway then transitions back outside of the curb. Once we get past a lavender pit and we convert what we currently have as a merge lane into more of a standard intersection where a vehicle would make a movement up coming from Main Street and then make a right turn onto SR eighty. And then within this concept, my goodness, I don't know why I keep running out of memory here. Let me open that up again. Getting an error here. Okay, here we are up near the Queen Mine Tour where we have the pathway. It's constructed adjacent to the existing Main Street. Up until we get through SR eighty. And actually here at SR eighty, going under SR eighty requires a widening of the bridge, the current bridge or construction of an adjacent box culvert similar to the exist, there's this bridge is an existing box culvert, we would construct a second box culvert adjacent to it. And I'll show you a few more of those renderings here as we head back to the presentation. Let's find my PowerPoint here again. Okay, so I've showed you the west end alternatives here for concept B. And concept A, I didn't actually show you that concept A, let me, sorry about that. Let me go into that and show you that. The difference between the alternatives between concept A and concept B. Okay, so concept A actually replaces the existing Main Street with a, the connection to SR eighty with a shared use path through constructing the the pathway within what is currently the eastbound lane of Main Street. And that would continue on the pathway. And then the vehicles coming off SR eighty would be able to continue to enter Old Town Historic Bisbee, traveling westbound. But vehicles that would previously be exiting Bisbee to get to SR eighty would then come down Nocka Road, which we converted to a two-way roadway. And so that requires this intersection reconfiguration such as this. When we look at the comparison between the pathways, there's the, in addition to the work, the intersection reconfiguration, concept A. And then concept B requires a bridge widening and reconstruction. Concept A could be done for a total cost of about two-point-five million. Whereas concept B would be anywhere from about four-point-two million up to five-point-two million, depending upon our bridge configuration option. Four-point-two million if we go to a culvert option. And then five-point-two million if the bridge is completely reconstructed and widened. And here is a rendering of concept B, which would be the bridge widening and reconstruction. You can see the bridge widening here, traffic lanes retain in its current configuration. But we have the pathway here in the wide bridge area and you can see here on the left is a current configuration. Here we have the cost in twenty twenty-one dollars, about two-point-two million. And twenty twenty-four dollars with inflation estimating at two-point-five million dollars. Whereas concept B, four-point-seven million and twenty twenty-one dollars. And most of that is really due to the bridge difference in costs. And then in twenty twenty-four, up to five-point-two million. We have looked at some options to reduce the cost of the options. The project could be implemented in two phases. Phase one being from Erie Street to the Queen Mine Tour. And with that phase, that could be done for a cost of about two million dollars. And then phase two, coming along afterwards, finishing the pathway from the Queen Mine Tour towards Main Street. At two-point-seven million with the bridge option, reconstructing the bridge or one-point-seven million to construct a second box culvert, which would also require retaining walls, et cetera. So with that, maybe I'll pause to answer any questions about the concepts themselves. And then we can go to what we've heard from the public and recommendations on next steps. So is there any questions from the council on concept A or concept B?
If everybody would come back online so we could see hands, if you have questions.
You'd have to stop sharing his screen for just a minute so you could see everybody. There you go.
Okay. Well, I have two screens. All right. Any hands or would you like, I think maybe if I don't see any hands right away on questions, I'm going to open up to the public just for a couple of comments we have. And then I'll ask all the kids. Okay, go ahead, Joni, do you have something?
Can you explain what a box culvert is?
Sure, the box culvert is similar to the way the current bridge is constructed. It's basically a concrete lined. They use it both for drainage crossings and a large box culvert they're using as a bridge. Whereas a full bridge would be a span with the abutments, et cetera. So the box culvert option will construct a second box culvert adjacent to the existing box culvert bridge. It would, the existing one would be there for traffic lanes and you have a second one adjacent to it. And so it would be almost two tunnels instead of one large tunnel or large bridge opening for the bridge option.
So do those culverts then provide the same amount of, what am I trying to say, strength? I guess not for a better word, that just a regular bridge?
Yes, they do. The difference is really going to be you have two narrower openings as opposed to one larger opening. So by nature, it'll be darker in there perhaps, you know, it's a fairly short bridge, so it's not a big issue. Whether it's darker, but you can visualize it, it's essentially two openings instead of one large opening.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
Yeah, the things that you were showing, it was the the one-way into Old Bisbee. How is that going to impact public safety apparatus?
I'm having a hard time hearing.
Talking about the one-way into Old Bisbee, that it would only be a one-way street. How is that going to impact our public safety personnel?
Yes, so if I understand the question, how would the one-way street impact public, impact public safety, fire access, police access, et cetera? Yeah, so we have, there is sufficient right of way, street width to make it a two-lane, two-lane street. So one direction in each, one lane in each direction. And so police and fire would use, are you talking about the, I'm sorry, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Are you talking about north on Nocka or are you talking about down south on Main Street?
On, north on Nocka.
North on Nocka, okay, so that would be configured as a two-way street. And police and fire would use that street similar to other traffic.
You would lose some, people now park on both sides of that and that would have to go away and have some sort of maybe a buffer on the edges so they could have a breakdown area to pull off maybe a partway. But that could affect, we'll lose some parking that way.
Yeah, you would lose parking. Yeah, you would lose parking and and as it gets into design, we'd look at if that need to be that buff area need to be widened or the curb modified slightly to to make sure that we accommodate to two directions of travel.
One more question. Losing parking, we already have limited parking. So how much are we talking about possibly losing?
So there's currently, um, well, let me share my screen with you here again. I can show that image. So this is the the image of what the reconfigured roadway would look like. We have shown maintaining. That's probably three or four parking stalls right there. Mayor Budge, maybe you know exactly right offhand, there's probably what, seven or eight stalls there currently?
Actually on both sides of the highway, not just one. Yeah.
Okay, so we're we're showing that there would be three or four stalls adjacent to the the businesses. So it would be removing the seven or eight stalls that are currently on both sides of the highway. And replacing it with a three or four stalls on one side of the highway.
Just wanted to make that point when I. Any other questions? Let's quickly hear from the public and then we'll.
So maybe perhaps Mayor Budge, I'll finish the presentation and then we'll go.
Okay, I thought you, I thought you were done, but go ahead, sure.
Yeah, just pause for any questions on the concept. So I'll finish a presentation and then.
Before we go, Ken.
Yeah.
Brett, can you roll that back to that last slide?
The PDF?
Yeah, the two, go back two slides now.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. Yeah, Brett, put your cursor on that stop bar there coming out. There you go, right there. And and I I think Brett's gonna get to this at some point in the presentation, but the there, there's more than one objection to making Naco Road a two-way street. And that is if you look at this from the perspective of being in your car. You pull up to that stop bar and you have to turn your head to the right 110 degrees uphill in order to see traffic and then negotiate a safe left turn at that location. So staff, I just get it out there now. Staff does not like that Option A for that reason.
Yeah, they they come off that hill pretty fast. I'll, I can justify, I see it all the time.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian, you finish up and then.
I'll switch back to the PowerPoint here. Okay, so as I mentioned, a couple of options for a phase, let's see, how do I, let's, current slide here, okay. Phase implementation ranging depending on the bridge option or the box culvert option, 1.7 million to 2.7 million. So as we go and we look back, we took the the concepts to the public in May of 2018. Asked for their their thoughts. The first question that we asked was, do you agree with the following statement, I like and support the shared use path concepts that are presented? 58% strongly agree and another 10 agrees, over 68% in agreement with with the concepts with 22% in disagreement. When we, when we ask which option do you prefer, Option A or Option B? We have a combined, when you combine either Option A or Option B, well over 70, 75% of of folks are supportive of one of the two options, Option A or Option B, with 30% expressing a preference to do nothing, to keep the roadway as it is. Some of the the input they were received on the concepts, what do they like about the concepts? They like the physical barrier between the the vehicles and the pedestrians. They, the attributes so people can safely walk or bike. The the benefits to promoting a healthier community, the connectivity benefits, improving quality of life, reducing vehicle emissions, clear separation of 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 modes. We also did have several comments expressing concern with the concepts. Most prominently was concern about reducing the travel lanes from the four lanes down to the the three lane, one lane in each direction. So what would they change about the concepts? We heard comments about a desire for more landscaping. Several folks said they didn't want anything, you know, just keep the roadway as it is. Other comments for rest areas, covered, covered rest areas, benches to provide respite, etc. Concern about mixing pedestrians and bicyclists on on the same pathway. Concerns about maintenance, are we gonna be able to take care of it? Several comments about lighting, making sure we have lighting on the concept. Making sure that the other comments were were to extend the pathway further to to the east, all the way to the roundabout. And again, several comments of they would change nothing with the concepts. So with that public input, we heard a fairly strong preference for Concept B. Which maintains the same configuration between Erie Street or mean the configuration between Erie Street and the Queen Mine Tour is converting the eastbound travel lane to the shared use path. And then reconfiguring to provide one lane in each direction with a two-way center-left turn lane. Concept B between the Queen Mine Tour and the Historic Bisbee does require a widening of the bridge or constructing a second box culvert as shown in this rendering, but it does maintain the current traffic patterns as as currently is out there. And that cost, as I previously mentioned, for Concept B ranges from 2.2 million in today's dollars up to 5.2 million in 2024. And again, as we previously mentioned, there is a a potential cost-saving alternative to construct a second box culvert. That would obviously need to be designed and engineered for final confirmation. But the total cost ranging from 3.6 million in today's dollars up to 4.1 million in 2024 dollars. And then another potential option is to implement the section, the the concept into to two different phases. Go ahead and construct Segment one from Erie Street to the Queen Mine Tour. As first phase and Segment two from Queen Mine Tour to Historic Bisbee. Did want to spend just a a couple of minutes on on other input we received on the potential economic benefits. Bisbee bikeways reached out to several businesses and and community members and have received 23 letters of support from small businesses. Based on their their survey work indicate a potential for up to 45 new jobs as a result of of tourists visiting hotels, restaurants, etc. They also conducted intercept surveys with with 26 individuals. Most indicating that the pathway would make the city a more attractive place to visit. They would spend additional time within Bisbee. And then Bisbee received input from bicycle touring companies indicating that they would significantly in 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 increase the number of tours and visitors that they brought to Bisbee as a result of of the pathway. So recommendations on on next steps is for the council to consider a recommendation of moving forward with Option B. And then directing city council to pursue funding for the pathway. And then once that that funding is 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 secured, procuring a design consultant, completing the the required environmental processes. And then constructing the pathway either as an entire project or as phasing the project in two into segments depending on the availability of funding. So I'm now open for any comments and and discussion.
All right, thank you, Brett. Let's go ahead and hear from the public and then we'll open up to ourselves and see if we have a what the council would like, if we have a motion or or where we'd like to go. So.
Along with the public comment I have, I think Joel has one letter that was also submitted.
Right.
I have two, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, ready to.
Okay.
Okay. This is from Stephen Moramaco, Friday, July 2nd. Hello, I would like to make a comment regarding Agenda Item Number Eight. While I do not want to see a bike path happen, neither of the proposals presented to the public were sensible. I'm sorry, let me start over. While I do want to see a bike path happen, neither of the proposals presented to the public were sensible, costing millions of dollars and potentially lowering our road rates to a D grade. This plan needs to be rethought so that it works with what we have already and augments it. A bike lane is not going to bring tourists. They all come by car. Old Bisbee is full of hills and stairs. There is nowhere to bike there. The bike lane only goes to Lowell, leaving bicyclists stranded. If we are truly concerned about tourism and safety, why not expand the Bisbee bus hours so that it runs until 2:00 or 3:00 a.m.? You could charge an extra fee, which could be used toward a better shared path study that explores more than just options A and B. This would also give our disabled residents, the poor and working class a way to get to Old Bisbee at night. This would increase the job pool of workers and also reduce the amount of drunk drivers that go around the pit. Steve Moramaco, Warren. And then from Donna Pulling, Monday, July 5th. Please read during Agenda Item Number Eight. I will deliver the petitions to you Tuesday morning. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Please vote for Plan B of the Shared Use Path feasibility study and prioritize it for grant funding this year. I have asked that my letter of June 25th to ADOT be read tonight asking for maintenance and immediate improvements that would increase safety for cyclists and pedestrians at minimal expense until the pathway is completed. The signed petitions attached to that letter have been left with the city clerk for your reference. Thank you, Donna Pulling. This is the letter dated June 25th, 2021 to Mr. William Harmon of Arizona Department of Transportation regarding improvements to Bisbee highways 80 and 92. Dear Mr. Harmon, Enclosed are the petitions signed by 83 residents, friends and family of Sergio Lally, who was killed by a hit-and-run driver while riding his bike on June 21st, 2021. The petition was circulated at his memorial service on Thursday, June 17th. The Bisbee community is shaken by another bicyclist death on Highway 80 in one year. Vincente Abril died June 22nd, 2020 while riding his bike through the tunnel on a Sunday morning. Both of these cyclists were lifelong experienced cyclists who rode that highway for many years. The actions recommended on the petition are for the protection and safety of all cyclists, pedestrian and vehicles using Highway 80 and 92 within the Bisbee city limits in order to prevent more fatalities. One, restripe the portion of Highway 80 around the lavender pit as diagrammed in the Bisbee Shared Use Path feasibility study. An alternate recommendation would be to restripe the eastbound downhill lane to one lane with a 12-foot shoulder. This should be done as soon as possible in preparation for the Shared Use Use Path project. Two, restripe the tunnel to two travel lanes with wide shoulders. Three, reduce the speed limit from 45 to 30 all the way around the lavender pit. Place rumble strips on eastbound downhill lanes along with flashing lights to slow down traffic entering Bisbee. Four, clear the gravel, debris and shrubbery immediately and monthly along both sides of the highway and cut the tree branches that obstruct the speed limit signs. Five, replace outdated lights in the tunnel on Highway 80 with new LED lights and replace the lights around the lavender pit. Six, increase traffic control devices along Highway 80 and 92 showing the speed drivers are traveling and install traffic cameras. Seven, we are asking Arizona Highway Patrol to increase the patrol and enforcement of posted speed limits on Highway 80 and 92 in Bisbee city limits. Eight, identify and allocate ADOT funding that can be used to create the shared use path as defined in the feasibility study so that there is a continuous barrier between cyclists, pedestrians and traffic. It is with sincere concern for the health and safety of all Bisbee residents, visitors and travelers along these heavily used highways that we ask for your immediate attention to this matter. Sincerely, Donna Pulling.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Andrew Loz.
All right. Mr. Loz, you have your three minutes. You have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so I am absolutely in favor of a bike path and a shared use path, use path. And you know, even more so, of course, since Sergio's demise. You know, and and I think it's outrageous to not move forward immediately with something that so obviously could be accomplished. So I hope that would be on on the agenda, you know, and not just think you've you've done something. Obviously, you're gonna vote for this Plan B, you know, it seems to be set in stone at this point. But you really do need to do something before you know, this grant may or may not ever materialize. So it seems clear there's plenty of room for the keeping the four lanes from the viewpoint to Old Bisbee. There's already a sidewalk. There's lots of extra shoulder room on both sides. All it would take is some paint. And then from the viewpoint to Lowell, you could eliminate one lane in one direction. Now it's when you're going eastbound from the tunnel, from the just the other side of the tunnel, there is no, there, there will be, you know, if you eliminate the lane, the passing lanes around the pit, there will be nowhere to pass for 7.6 miles out past Naco Highway. And I think that's a really bad choice and I've heard over the years, I've been in retail business in Old Bisbee for nearly 30 years. And I have heard from a lot of people that live in other parts of Bisbee that they don't really enjoy coming to Old Bisbee that much. It's too congested. There's not really much they need there. And so I think by by eliminating any passing lanes, it's actually gonna hurt business in Old Bisbee. I I don't see it, you know, how the, all these people that sign these businesses that claim they're, they're gonna be able to hire more employees and all that. They're just making it up, you know, there's nothing to base that on. All of their letters are written on the same, from the same notebook you can see at the top of it. You know, obviously, somebody went around there and asked them all to say you could, you're gonna expect to make $500 more a day in sales based on nothing. Now, you know, if these tour bike tour companies bring people, they don't, you know, that's a minor part of the tour route. They're, you know, the Sun Corridor route is great. Yeah, let's have it, but you know, this one in whatever mile, it it's not gonna make any difference whether, you know, how nice that part is for a tour company, for a bike tour company. That's not why they're gonna bring people to Bisbee just to ride around the pit. So, you know, it it's obvious that this whole scheme has been based on the the idea of just eliminating traffic lanes. I mean, Megan just said on item five that her motivation, her focus is climate change. I mean, Megan just said on item five that her motivation, her focus is climate change. And she wants to reduce everybody to 30 miles an hour. Just it's like you're going to want to build a monument to, this giant monument to virtue signaling against climate change.
Okay, Mr. Loz, could you finish it up? Your three minutes. Thanks.
Well, am I done? You just interrupted me, or not?
Well, you've got about three and a half minutes, so I'd just like you to finish it up.
I appreciate the extra time. I think I've said enough. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have Megan Conley.
Okay, so, thank you, Council, and thank you, Brent. Thank you to everyone who's been involved in this. This has been ongoing for, you know, two years, over two years now. Just to respond to what Andrew was saying, this is one piece of a network. It's a huge piece. This section disconnects Old Bisbee from the rest of town. Old Bisbee has all the events. It has the restaurants. It's a very important segment. Yes, I am focused on climate change. I'm also focused on people getting outside and moving around and increasing their health. And I'm also focused on sustainable tourism and not people just coming to town to party. There's so much research out there. I recommend you look it up to show that these types of things create economic development. One excellent website is People for Bikes, I believe is what it's called. Anyway, it's clear that the majority is in favor of this. It's going to help the town. It's going to prevent deaths. And I think the council will make the right choice tonight. So, and we will continue to help move this forward, writing the grants and doing the research that needs to happen. So, thank you.
Next, we have Coriana Eastman.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Thank you for all the work that you've done so far on this project. I wanted to speak to you quickly from three different perspectives. First, I was struck heading westbound on my way to work on my bicycle, headed into Bisbee in 2011. I was, I broke bones and was injured, brought to the hospital. I almost lost my house to foreclosure. I have permanent injuries that I still have to this day that cause me pain. So I can speak firsthand to being struck as a cyclist. Second, after that happened, I lost a lot financially and couldn't afford a car, so I wound up walking into Old Bisbee to and from work at night. And so I can also speak to how dangerous walking there is or jogging because it's the, there's not enough room on the sides. And if you've ever walked around the pit, go, just heading towards the Lowell area, before you get there, some of that area around the pit is super narrow, very dangerous. And at night, I've seen cars hit the fence. I can't even tell you how many times. So I can speak to that as a person working in Old Bee, walking to and from the Warren area. I also can speak to driving because I drove from Bisbee to Fort Wachuka when I was working at Fort Wachuka. And I really don't understand what all the hoopla is about. Being slowed down for one minute going around a pit. I have never seen a traffic jam around the pit. Except the only time I've seen heavy traffic around the pit that was, you know, super significant enough to slow traffic was maybe for an event like the Bisbee stair climb or something. So people talking about how the drive is impaired significantly, I really don't understand that. I support Plan B for sure, and especially there's, you don't lose any parking with Plan B. It's a great plan. So thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate you hearing me out.
Next, we have Swan Diesel Fitzgerald.
Thank you for all the information and all the hard work around this issue. I think it's really important to highlight the connection between housing and transportation, which includes bikes and walking. It's really important to me to see that Plan B succeeds. And I think the person who is going to be addressing the community planning really needs to integrate the importance of the bike path and have a concept of multi-use development in communities. And thank you very much. And also for me, addressing climate change is top priority. And we're seeing the effects of our lack of action all over the world right now. Thank you very much.
All right, next we have Tracy Shepherd. Tracy, are you there? Are you muted yourself?
Oh, she's not muting, Ashley. Someone must have an open mic. I'm hearing a television in the background.
Okay. Can you all hear me? Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope that you all can make it a priority to implement the pathway around Lavender Pit and all the other bike ways in the Bisbee Mobility Master Plan. When I first drove into Bisbee in 2019, I noticed right away the danger of the stretch of road between Old Bisbee and Lowell. I've worked with the visually impaired community in the past as an O and M instructor, which is orientation and mobility. And this work had to do with teaching people to travel safely from point A to point B. I'm a huge proponent for people of all ages and abilities being able to get around. I've also been a full-time RV'er for five years before settling in Bisbee and have driven a lot of roads up and down the country. And that stretch of road is one of the, if not the, most dangerous stretch of highway I've encountered. I was very surprised to see that there wasn't a proper walking or biking area for people. I'm sure we all have stories of reckless driving that have affected us during that stretch. I witness it about every time I drive it. Taking it down the single lane each way would allow space for bicyclists and pedestrians, and it would keep the driving there safer. There is one lane travel around the rest of Bisbee, though I think that it would be relatively easy to get used to with the sheer flow of traffic. The middle turn lane would definitely allow the room for emergency vehicles to get through. The pathways would be healthy growth and adds to the well-being of the community, including elders, to get around, as well as the connectivity of the historical background of Bisbee. Having a walking and bike path that connects Old Bisbee to the mine, to the Lavender Pit, to Lowell, and beyond just makes sense. Not to mention the financial benefits to all of the businesses located everywhere. I know there is resistance to change. But this issue has always been a matter of personal sovereignty and public safety. And now more than ever, as the community member bicyclist was struck and killed, there is precedent. We cannot stay the same for fear of moving forward. Change can be difficult, but when it gets painful enough, change is welcomed. And I think this is that time. As the saying goes, take the first step and the path will appear. Thank you.
Okay, we also have Stephanie Peavy. She submitted a letter that she wanted to read, but I don't see that she is online.
Stephanie, are there?
It doesn't look like she's on the list that she's online right now.
Well, we'll include that in the minutes then, or letter. Is that it? Okay. All right, so closing the public comment at this time and opening it up to the council, I do have a question for Brent. Came up through this whole situation, if you could help me out a little. So we are, from what I'm hearing, and at least myself, I'm leaning to Plan B, of course. I didn't really like the two-way situation on Naco. So under putting it into phases, if we do phase one, how would, how do the people coming out of Old Bisbee using that existing path or the existing roadway, then they will have to come out and make a right-hand turn and look at the traffic coming down off the hill. There's no merge lane again. I guess that one's got me bothered too, because if you pull that way, you're going to have to look back over your shoulder 120 degrees to see what's coming at you from up above before you make the right-hand turn to enter 80. I didn't see that plan on how you were, how that was going to happen under phase one.
Yeah, let me show that image to you here again. You seen that here?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have it, and this is all open pavement here. So it's a restryping, or they would come up and get as perpendicular to 80 as we can get it. And then they would make a right turn. So we want to minimize this angle, you know, so people aren't looking over their shoulder trying to get this as perpendicular as possible as we can here for then people to make that turn on this R80.
Well, maybe under the design phase, we can ask for, there is some property, flat property there on the right-hand side. Possibly we could, yeah, right where your hand is. If they would give up a little bit of that, we could extend that path there, and then we wouldn't have to have maybe such a, you know, such a right-hand turn, but anyway.
At some point, this, because right now, this lane becomes a second travel lane. So at some point, it needs to merge into the one lane. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, there's two lanes there now, but we're going to eliminate the right one.
Correct. Yes.
But if we made the merge further down, yeah, towards the right there, you know, further even right, if you look where it says raised median there, that area is actually, had been considered a second view area. So, but I'm not going to complicate matters, but there might be a way to to bring the pathway along there. I know it's outside the fence right now. We'd have to get some concessions from FMI. But then that way, we could continue not having to have, we could have a longer way to merge in instead of that right-hand turn. Yeah.
Different concepts could be considered during the design, once we have right-of-way and everything else.
Because under phase two, then that right-hand turn lane doesn't show up on your plan, right? Under phase two, it just, there's a whole path all the way along there. Or that still have that right-hand turn?
You mean?
Option two of our B, you know, the number B, or not B, option two, which then we have a full lane all the way around.
Yeah, so this is option B. So this is how option B would.
Okay, either whether it be getting under the bridge or starting at, in the Queen Mine, that's what I'm saying.
Right, yeah. Somehow we need to bring in traffic, whether it's, you know, like you suggest, but somehow we need to bring traffic into this west, this eastbound traffic lane.
And I don't see.
There needs to be some sort of intersection.
So what I don't see is the return that you, when you come out of the Queen Mine to return into Old Bisbee. How would you do that? I don't see that on the, yeah, there, you can see the return there. Would that remain? And then?
Yeah, we would, there would be no changes to the current traffic patterns in the Queen Mine area.
Okay.
So vehicles coming out would, I guess what you're, I guess, we're not reducing the number of traffic lanes anywhere through here, so the current patterns would be maintained.
So just further on the right of that path, then we would, that would end up having another. See, right there, where that return is, it's almost a right-hand turn as it is, right there. Yeah.
Yeah.
You could almost turn right, right there, and enter into the, into 80 or go straight across.
You could, yeah, exactly. You could do that, yep.
What I'm afraid of is the further you go down, the harder it is to look. I use that a lot to return to my driveway. So I know how hard it is to look back uphill to see what's coming at you. And the further you get down to the east, the harder it becomes to look behind you to see that, because that turns there. You can see there's a curve that's coming around at you. All right.
So you're saying you could improve this to have both?
Yeah, it could be almost two lanes wide, and either the right-hand turns right, or the left one goes straight across.
Right, yeah, certainly. You could consider something like that.
All right, I just, I didn't, it didn't all curb together for me on that one. All right, thanks. You can get the screen back. There you go. Well, that was my question. How about some more? We got anyone else with their hands? Anna, Leslie, Joni, Frank? Anybody?
Well, it looks to me the best option is option B. And I think if we go ahead and say we're going to implement that at the design phase, we can make those changes as you were talking about to.
So, yeah, we, there needs to be a beginning. If we do it in phase one, there needs to be a place where they can start to get on the path somewhere right there by the mine tour. So anyway, that was part of my concern. So I can see now that it could work the way it was explained. Anything else? Anyone else? Go ahead, Leslie.
Sorry, I was talking to myself.
We do that a lot.
I just want to say that I understand people's reservations about this path. You know, I understand the people who support it. I've read the research on healthier communities and walkability and bikeability. And that's why I think it's important, but I understand the concerns about losing the travel lanes around the pit. And I understand the concerns about, you know, rerouting all these roads coming out of Old Bisbee. And I just want to let people know that their concerns have been heard. And that ultimately, and it has been a rough decision for me, because I do like to pass people going around the pit. And I just want the, you know, I don't want people to think that they're getting totally bowled over and that they haven't been heard if we pass this. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks for that, Leslie. Any other comments? Go ahead, Anna.
I think this in concept, I guess, it's a good idea. I really, you know, like the idea of a multi-use path. But I have some concerns, you know, with the loss of lanes, that it will impede traffic. Not so much slow people down. I mean, people can deal with that. One of the big things is the response time of our first responders and the safety of our first responders while they are involved in an accident or whatever there. And I think the one thing that nobody has really addressed is how the road is slopping off on the inner lane as you're heading. as you're heading down towards a traffic circle, just as you get past where the conveyor belt used to be. Um, nobody has addressed that, and I don't know, I, it's a tough decision, and, and I understand both sides, I really do, and as somebody who grew up riding my bike up to Old Bisbee, and walking that area probably more times than I should have, I get the dangerous part of it, but it was just part of us growing up that we, that we did that, and, you know, thank goodness, we all, we all made it. And I recognize that anytime, you know, you have an injury or a death due to an accident like that, it's tragic, and we all, you know, we all feel bad, but I don't know that this is the answer, I don't know.
All right, Joni, go ahead.
Um, I agree too with what Leslie had said, you know, I know there's a lot of people that have concerns, um, and I do see both sides of it, but I also, I wanna address, there's a lot of people that are saying that, you know, there's not very many people biking or walking at this time, and that might be due to the fact of the safety or lack thereof. Um, that's just a chance we would be taking, putting this bike path in, um, at, at an increase. I too used to ride my bike to Old Bisbee as a kid, and know the inherent danger, and I don't ride to Old Bisbee, and I do ride my bike in Warren, and I would be one person that would utilize that if it was put in. Um, there are a lot of concerns as far as crossing traffic, again, like, uh, safety personnel and such, but I think this bike path is a good, um, additive to connect our wards, and to give those people that don't have motor vehicle ability, the opportunity to ride their bike to Safeway, or ride their bike, uh, to other places, and in the long run, when they do the whole connection, um, this is, you know, gonna end up being the weak link if it's not put in when they're connecting from Las Vegas to Douglas.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll just conclude with my, my feelings, I mean, I've always wanted us to, to quit being the, uh, the snake with three mice inside, and there's no connection between our three major parts of the, of our city, except by one state highway, and, or two-state highways. I think it's important that we do connect, I mean, the time I spend over in Sierra Vista, they have a lot of those paths that are, that are off the side. I was there just this week, and I just started making note, and I counted over ten people using those just to walk along, and it, they're a pretty major highway, there's still a lot of, you know, carbon dioxide, I'm sure, but, but still, I don't think anybody, I only know one pretty tough old lady that still runs that day after day, but I think a lot more would be much more apt to use that as a, as a way to get exercise, um, whether running or just walking, I would use it if I felt that I had a, a barrier between me, be, because most of the accidents that I have ever seen on that is, are always on the pit side, I mean, that's where the, that's where the, the, uh, the fence always gets blown out, and, and I think that a barrier there would help keep everybody safe, including the cars that end up wanting to go into the pit when they, when they lose it, so, um, there needs to be some separation, um, splash zones, if it's raining and the cars are zooming right by you, you're gonna get, you know, anything thrown up at you, so, so I do support B, um, I have a little apprehension, but we can, we can make things work, uh, on how we're gonna merge the outgoing people from, uh, from Old Bisbee to go, to go, uh, eastbound, um, safely, a lot better than crossing over, uh, to do it, so, the other thing, I, I, I'm just gonna put it out there right now, that I'm gonna hit up ADOT and, and that big, big island you see in the middle of everything, we ought to be able to turn that into parking ourselves. Um, if we could get that into a parking lot, that would, that would serve us ability for people to park there, and, and probably with a, with a safer crosswalk, 'cause they're not going that fast, get across over to the mine tour, and, and that would help even increase the ability to, to, to use the path if we, if we could provide even more parking, but that's a, that's a wishful thinking on my part, but that's kinda what I identified here. Um, you know, looking at this over this long period, but it's not part of this plan, so, I'm gonna be in favor of voting for Plan B, um, and we'll try to get fund, I will support getting funding, I would love to fund the whole thing in one fell swoop, but if we, if we can't, uh, we could phase it in and, and, and get these, that, the really bad part done, and then work on the second part to, to, to finish the job, so, that's my, my feeling on this, so, just so, and I understand, but I, I sometimes think people are going too fast anyway, and two lanes, that going up, you're being one lane, but as soon as you get to Old Bisbee, it turns into two lanes right after the merge, so we've got passing there, and then you got passing just before the tunnel, so, there's plenty of ways to pass going up, the, going down. I, I've never really been behind a slope, seems like the downhill slope, everybody goes pretty fast anyway, sometimes too fast, and that's why they end up in the fence, but, anyway, that's just my, my overall concept, so, uh, any other comments after my long-winded thing, okay, so, I'll make a motion that we approve this concept, Plan B, and that we will institute looking for some funding to implement Plan B, at least Phase One, and hopefully through and completing the Phase Two. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, basically, if you understand my motion, it's that we, um, agree with this concept plan, uh, of course, it will take more engineering, but, and that it will be supportive of Plan B, with hopefully looking for funding first for the entire, but if we can do it, if we need to do it in phases, through the cost, uh, we work it through Phase One. I have a motion and a second by, motion by myself, a second by Frank, I'll call for a real call.
Councilmember Giacomoino.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Me.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes, uh, four to one. So, that's number eight. Trying to get moving on here to number nine. So this, number nine, will be a discussion plus approval for the sale of surplus garbage trucks. Uh, thank you, Public Works Director, Harold, for hanging in there, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and thanks to the approval of, uh, you, for you all to purchase new garbage trucks, uh, we will now have three garbage trucks that will be surplus, um, of vehicles, so, what we are doing is, uh, asking for permission to sell those, um, we are, we do intend to list them on the website gov.com, and, uh, we hope to be able to, uh, get a return on these vehicles.
Well, they got new tires, and I'd be worse than them.
They do.
Uh, any discussion on, uh, used garbage trucks? I'll be glad to see him go, no. Uh, I move to approve the sale of our surplus garbage trucks, have a second?
Second.
Motion by myself to approve the sale of our surplus garbage trucks, second by Leslie. Go ahead and take a vote, I'll, Ashley, and I'll move on down to the next one.
Councilmember Giacomoino.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes five zero. Um, moving on to the next one is item ten, this is discussion impossible, approval of the change of rate of monthly passes for the Bisbee bus for senior and disabled riders. Um, go ahead, Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, so, what the intent of this is, is not to increase the rate that we charge for senior and disabled riders. Currently, um, we do charge a, a very small rate at seventy-five cents for a monthly bus pass. Um, what this is causing is, um, because it's such a low rate, the seniors and disabled riders that are eligible for a free bus that's, that's, uh, added by CEGO in, in grant money, um, they are not coming in and getting the free pass, rather than they're just paying the driver seventy-five cent monthly pass, now, I understand that's a, a convenience, and, and, and that's why they don't wanna come in, but what it's doing is, is we aren't using, um, the grant money provided by CEGO. Um, if we continue down this path, then we will be, we're, we're at risk of actually losing the grant and not being approved here, so, what we're trying to do is influence riders, um, to take advantage of the free pass. We don't wanna, we don't necessarily want them to have to pay for more, we want them to pay less and utilize the free pass. Uh, so that's, that is the intent of, uh, changing the rates, uh, for the seniors and disabled riders.
Okay, questions, council?
What would be the increase, babe?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What would be the increase?
The increase would go to fifteen dollars per month.
That they could get, basically, that fifteen month dollars would be covered by the CEGO pass, so there'd be no, they would actually not pay anything if they got that pass. What I wanna know is how, what, how hard is it to get, do the bus drivers carry those passes, how, how they gonna get them?
No, the, the CEGO pass that's provided by them, they would, they do come into the office, um, they get a, they get their photo, and, and we provide a pass that way. Uh, currently, with the seventy-five cent month, monthly pass, they do pay seventy-five cents to the bus driver, and the bus driver issues a, a, a separate.
Is there a way that, once they've come in and got their first one, if they wanna get the next one, they don't have to come in, they could show their pass one and just get another one, I mean, it, it seems a little bit-
That is the way they do it, but I, I believe that is the way it's done, once, once you get the first, the first one, uh, we can, we can take payments, or it wouldn't be a payment, we would, uh, we would, uh, have to just renew it, but I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that process, but we will definitely make it as easy as possible, we don't, don't want to, to, we just want it to be convenient for everybody.
Right, I just don't wanna make everybody come to, come to the City Hall every single month, month after month after month. Yes, the one time to get qualified, and then, what do you think, uh, City Manager Park, what, could we look into that?
Sure, sure, we'll do anything we can, we, we really wanna use that grant money up.
Sure.
Um, so, um, we will work with CEGO to make that, uh, transition as easy as we possibly can.
Right, I, yeah, I don't, I think maybe they pay seventy-five, 'cause that way they don't have to make an extra stop and do all the other stuff, and asking them to do it just once, and then, if they already have a pass and it's starting to expire, they could get another one without having to, to go through the whole, um, extra thing, that would really please me, anyway, that's what I think, that's what I'm thinking, so, if we could make that happen, I'm in favor. Any other comments, any other hands? Seeing none, uh, would, somebody wanna make a motion, or? Not. Um, all right, I'll make the, I'll make the report motion, I move to approve the rate change for monthly passes on the Bisbee bus for senior and disabled riders to fifteen dollars per month, and that we work with CEGO so that they may renew those passes by the bus driver.
Second.
Second.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, I'm, I'm just watching the side screen over here on Facebook, and uh, somebody just put up a comment that the CEGO pass is renewed once a year. Um, we'll verify that, but if it's once a year, then I don't know that it's, it's already pretty convenient, but we'll make sure, we'll, we'll listen to the riders and see what they want.
Okay, that's just making it, I'll, I'll revise my motion to move to approve the rate change for monthly passes for the Bisbee bus for seniors and disabled riders of fifteen dollars per month, make it as easy as possible, as, as we possibly can. Yeah, I know we'll do that anyway, but I want it in the motion, will you, uh, second that, Leslie?
Second.
All right, motion and second to approve the rate change, uh, can I have a vote, please?
Councilmember Giacomoino.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Mayor Pro temp line.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes five zero. Uh, all right, uh, we're gonna move into the City Managers' Report, um, this will be item eleven.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize in advance, uh, for the, uh, lengthy City Manager Report you're about to get. Um, so, and, and there will be a couple of extras, uh, over there under other business. Um, uh, item number one, um, we, um, have received, um, not only the award notification uh, for the, uh, Fiscal Recovery Fund, uh, but we've also actually received our first installment. Um, that was received on January second in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and change. Um, now, uh, as, um, I had mentioned once before, and, and I'm reminding you in the City Managers' Report, uh, on the second page, uh, there are criteria for spending the money, um, that make this a little bit, uh, more, um, cumbersome, shall we say, than, uh, the grant that you got two years ago, that just simply went to public safety, and uh, we could spend it right out of the general fund, this won't be so simple. Um, and so, um, what I'm gonna ask you to do tonight is think about, um, uh, getting, um, a special council meeting, I don't wanna work session, I wanna council meeting so you can make decisions. Um, we need to have a special council meeting with just this item on it, um, so that Carrie and I can, uh, go over with you how we can spend the money and not, uh, and then also take your input on how you want to see us spend it. Um, because, um, well, it's the city's money, and, and you're the representatives of the city, so, uh, we may have some items for you, in fact, I've already gotten, um, one grant request from the healthcare sector, um, and I advised them that it was gonna be a little while before we could actually grant any requests. Um, even though it's a good request, I don't wanna do that, uh, without your, uh, approval, so, um, Mayor, if you and I could work on with Ashley on getting a special council meeting set up as quickly as possible, uh, so we can start, uh, doing what we need to do to get this money, um, allocated in, in a, in a proper fashion.
We have some vacations, so, yeah, we wanna look. That's your assignment, Ashley, start contacting, seeing what we can work through, thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, second item, um, Mayor and I, uh, met with the Mining Museum, um, Director and Fred Miller, excuse me, uh, one day last week, um, with, uh, the purpose of determining when to reopen, um, our tourism function. Um, in, in light of that, um, we have an existing agreement with the, um, the Mining Museum for a part-time employee to be partially paid through city funds through the, um, transient bed tax, and, uh, that, um, contract does not expire until sometime in twenty-twenty-two, um, and, and so obviously, we're gonna simply honor that since it's still in force. Um, we did, uh, allocate money in the current budget to establish a, um, tourism, uh, excuse me, um, yeah, tourism manager, um, in, the same job description that you will remember Alonis Verkanic um, had, uh, for many years prior to her retirement, um, and we have, in fact, already begun to advertise, uh, the position, and, and, and we're, we're, we're getting what I think are a couple of good applications already, um, so, uh, we're gonna work with Doug, um- So we're going to work with Doug Graham at the Mine Tour to reestablish that office up there that Alona had only. And sorry, Alona, I know it's your birthday today, but we're, we're going to approve your office for somebody else. And so it'll, it'll be more comfortable, shall we say, and and more practical. And so we're going to reestablish on a local basis, the, the person that is our go-to for all of those different tourism functions that we've been used to having. In the meantime, we also have a contract coming up next month with our existing contractor who's been purchasing our advertising and doing some of our promotion for us. I have talked with her and we have agreed that we will renew this contract in a transition year, whether or not it ends up being a whole year or not remains to be seen, but I want the transition to be as seamless as possible. And with the bed tax being renewed, there will be funds to support making that transition slowly and effectively. So so we'll continue to work with Jen in the meantime until, until we're comfortable that whoever we hire is ready to go. And that means that Jen will be working with AOT for this year's round of co-op, co-op advertising because we're expecting that to open up any day now. In fact, the last time I did this, it had already opened up and closed by now. So they're coming out of the pandemic at, at the Arizona Office of Tourism, just like many of us are. And so they're, they're kind of slow, but they're getting there. And we also believe that they will open up the co-op advertising not just for now, but they'll reopen it again later in the fiscal year. Because some of the money that we just received in the American Rescue Plan is eligible to be used for tourism. And I think we can agree on one thing, and that is that our tourism sector was beat up pretty bad in the last year. So we, we want to take a hard look at how we deal with that moving forward as well. Let's see. Item number three, and and this is more of an internal discussion. The, the, the staff is going to go ahead and do a Bisbee booth at the League of Cities Conference. I see Anna clapping with her, with her cast already. We haven't, we haven't marketed ourselves to all the other cities in Arizona in quite a few years now. And I think now coming out of COVID and being able to do some things with tourism dollars that have returned that we will be able to put together a successful booth. We will be looking for those of you who go to the conference to also give us a hand for an hour or so in the booth. And and we're also looking for any suggestions that you might want to have for what we might want to do with that booth. We've already talked to Doug Graham at the Mine Tour about getting some giveaway stuff for us that we can give away to people who come to the conference. And I, I might just get a couple of images prepared similar to the one behind me that we might want to raffle off or some other type of raffle to bring more attention to the city. So just a heads up, if you're going to the conference, we're going to need your help for a little bit during that four-day period. Item number four, and and several of you attended a meeting at the Hillcrest Apartment Building. There was a working group established earlier on that we now expanded a little bit to include people who had expressed an interest to me since I've been back to be involved in that. And, you know, far be it from me to say no to anybody that wants to volunteer. So so we've expanded the group a little bit. We have involved CGO in, in the effort to secure funding for what we're going to do with that eventually. And in fact, we, and we actually had a small group meet over at CGO just this afternoon to start the process of working with the agencies who provide funding for affordable housing opportunities and tax credit opportunities for anyone who may want to do some renovation over there. So we'll be coming back to you in the not-too-distant future with more solid recommendations as to how to proceed. In the meantime, if you have any particular, I know several of you here tonight were, were there for the tour. I, I do want to let you know, one important outcome of that meeting is that we do have a source of funding for the cleanup. And and I think anybody who's been in that building will agree, there's a lot of it there to do. And so that's a major concern, at least of mine, that is now off my plate. Because when we start showing that place around to prospective funders and prospective buyers, we certainly want to, you know, it's like putting your house up for sale and showing it, you know, before you clean it. And so we want it to look nice during, during that period of time. So we'll be coming to you with more recommendations and outcomes, and it won't take much longer. We're going to work on this with all deliberate speed because we really want to move that as quickly as possible back to the point where it's useful in, in, in the aspect of helping people find an affordable place to live in this community. Okay, item number five. Now that the Master Mobility Plan has been received by the mayor and council, and and you had some discussion on that at the last meeting. We did have discussion with FMI, Freeport-Mackay, with regard to the areas of interest to them, which of course are on land they own. The company has asked me for some time so that they can send the plan up to Phoenix so that the management team can take a look at it and make some specific recommendations as to how they would like to participate with the plan. And it's a two-step process because once management gets a chance to look at it, then they're going to run everything past the Mine Safety and Health Administration, which is a federal agency, more commonly known as MSHA. You know, they are, they are the OSHA of the mining industry. And they're going to want to make sure that where we're at is safe. And if it's not safe, to make recommendations to remediate those areas so that they will become safe. And then at that point, they will send the whole thing back to us with their recommendations. In addition to that, I have met with a couple of property owners who have had some concerns about some of the paths that were listed in the mobility plan. We've heard them, when everything comes back to us, we're, we're going to bring the group back together and spread it out on a table and make any revisions or recommendations that need to be made before we bring it back to you. And so, well, we'd like to do it with all deliberate speed. I'm pretty sure it isn't going to be next week, but hopefully not too far down the road because we, we would, we would like you to approve that plan as, as quickly as possible. Item number six, you, you just witnessed the beginning of, of our surplus vehicle disposal plan. At the last staff meeting, we determined that there are a good number of vehicles in our fleet in every aspect of our fleet that are vehicles that are little or never used. The, the, the goal that we've set for ourselves is to remove all of the surplus vehicles from service and take them down to the impound yard. And and the goal is to hold an auction, a vehicle auction, and, and probably some other stuff by the end of September. We'd like to do it in September because that gives us time to prepare the vehicles. But it also gives us a little bit milder weather for standing around in a boneyard for four hours waiting to bid on your favorite old police car. So that is ongoing. There, there's a major cost of vehicles, as you know. You know, we, we no longer have the advantage of, of using Rico money to buy every vehicle because we just don't have the Rico income that we had five years ago or ten years ago. And so these are real costs. And one of the real costs to having surplus vehicles is insurance. You know, we pay a very large premium every year just to ensure the vehicles. Forget about the buildings for a moment. And so if we're not using them, we shouldn't be spending money on them. And so, you know, what little will get back on the vehicles is, 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 is not a major consideration. We didn't budget much for an auction if we make any money out of it all and and eliminate the cost, then, then that's a plus. And, and, and this is another one of the ongoing efforts since I've been back to find ways to reduce our expenses because we can control expenses a lot more readily than we can control our revenues. So that will be ongoing through the end of December. And of course, Mr. Harrow just showed you the phase one of that by putting three refuse vehicles up for auction. So I'm going to keep going here for a minute, Jesus, and let you finish up. I also wanted to note that we did get our final state shared revenue numbers for the year. Those numbers reflect about thirty-six thousand dollars more than we budgeted because we budgeted the preliminary number that came out in March. And so we, we've actually benefited a little bit from the process of the revenue sharing. So we'll have a little bit more money in the general fund through that process than what we had first envisioned. But as you know, thirty-six thousand dollars is, you know, you can spend that in a heartbeat when you're municipal government. So, but it's good news nonetheless. Let's see, a couple more items here. Oh, speaking of the picture behind me, apparently the waterfall, waterfall that you can now see attracted a lot of attention over the weekend to the degree that a couple of days ago, ADOT went along that, that turnout area there and cut it off. I, well, I won't share my personal opinion about that with you, but, but I, but I also know it didn't stop anything. I did inquire with the district engineer for ADOT this morning about the purpose for closing that off to traffic. And they also closed the, the next one to the east off as well. So that's two turnouts. And and remind everybody that they paved those turnouts when they repaved Highway eighty for the purpose of allowing people to safely get off the highway to see things like the waterfall when it flows. So my suspicion is that it was a request coming from DPS, but I haven't received a return phone call from the district engineer yet. I expect to tomorrow. And I, I think that, you know, we've talked about a couple of things right in that neighborhood, one of which is the fact that the waterfall is a tourist attraction. People actually come here. In fact, a friend of mine sent me a picture at dinnertime of the waterfall that he took despite the fact that it wasn't open. I won't give his name out loud, but this guy came from a considerable distance to take it. And right now, it's only a trickle. So, so anyway, I, I think we need to work with the state to resolve that issue because people will use the roadside anyway or any one of the driveways that are in the near vicinity which block private access to reach some accommodation. Because, I mean, I was, I took this, the picture behind me I took on Sunday. We went down there. I was there for about a half an hour. I took my pictures. Several cars came and went as I was there. Most people don't stick around. They take their picture and go. And and the, the other aspect of it is that there is some effort being made for some kind of a preserve in the area. And if, if, if ADOT's going to continue to close the road off, it's going to close off access to what potentially might be an area. And I'm seeing a comment make a parking area. That's one of our long-term plans down there. But in the meantime, we still need safe places for people to park, so we can't cut them off. So that's, that's that for anybody who's gotten a call, and I know some of you, some of you had. Okay, last thing I have is I shared with you the notice of violation that was provided to us by the city of Bisbee at one eighteen Arizona Street. This is a situation that I have discussed with you once before, but not in great detail. I, I think we've reached a point now where we can no longer wait for a decision to be made on this. I have not talked with more than one or two of you on this, but I know that there was during the public comment period of over a year ago, there were a lot of people who wanted to save the existing structure. In fact, I've received a phone call and a visit from two members of the public this morning on that exact, for that exact reason. The, the, here's the reality, okay? That building can't stay, okay? It simply will not bear a load. The engineer who did the report said it won't bear a load, okay? However, I share with all of you the, the need or the desire to remain at one eighteen Arizona Street as City Hall. All of you will remember that I spent eight years of my life in that building. And and seeing it burn was a terrible blow. We believe that we can perhaps save some of the architectural features of that building on the front. And we think that if, if we get the right demo contractor, we can surgically cut that away from the rest of the building so that it will remain as it was originally built in, was it nineteen oh eight or nineteen oh nine? And and that's really, if you think about it, if you look at that building, that, that is the major architectural feature of, of, of City Hall. So in the meantime, I'm getting the cost estimates that you got two years ago revised because I think we all know what's going to happen. And in the meantime, we've also been in contact with some of our representatives to see if we can raise some money because I, I think we're going to be looking at somewhere between one and two million dollars of money that we're going to need to do what we had before in addition to the two million dollars that you already have locked away. So this is not easy, but it is doable. In the meantime, Jesus is trying to get the apparent low bidder from your last round of bidding under, under the guise of COVID stopped everything in April of twenty twenty, so we couldn't go forward with it. We're going to see if they're willing to honor their, their bid or only slightly modify it. Joe and I have, Mr. Estes, Mr. Joe Estes and I have had this discussion. There is a way we can continue using those bids safely. And we'll also have to talk to, if that, if that demo contractor is willing to do so, we'll have to talk to him. It'll probably cost a little bit more to saw cut that entryway from the rest of the building. So now, I'm telling you all this because we need to move. Now, none of this is my idea, but it's a, it's a combination of ideas that I have picked up that I think are good ones in a path to move forward. You know, I, I was able to convince at least one person that I talked to this morning that, you know, saving the important You know, saving the important architectural features of that building. Was the right thing to do. Because we had to demo the rest of the building, and if I keep talking any longer, I'll probably say some things I'll regret because. I feel very strongly about what happened to that building and how it happened. Yeah, but I also feel very strongly that we have to build a safe building. Behind what we can, what we can save. In order to make it happen, if you object to that, let me know. If you don't object to that, the staff will continue to move forward. And that's all I have, if you don't have, well, you can't ask me questions because it wasn't on the agenda. But please, I do need the feedback and I do need it quickly. And then we will go to Mr. Harrow for his. Biweekly report on Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Parkin. We did, I did receive a completed draft of the drainage study for the road. And it did show that there's one of interest. The area of interest will, that there is a possibility that water will, water could go in the front door. There was the the water level, high water level was raised very minor, it was point five to point eight inches. However, the roadway, the study does show that this area of interest. Was already getting, it would have already gotten water in the door. Prior to the overlay, so what it shows is that there was no, there was no increase or nothing that was caused by the overlay. We can make that the final draft available to mayor and council and to the public.
Jesus, you might want to brief them on what your current plans are for the catch basin.
They they were, there were some some recommendations. On some mitigating, something to do something to mitigate that that condition. One of them was to put in a catch basin that crosses the street very similar to what's over down by the library. That would be placed somewhere in its near the end. Hotel location, there is a catch basin there that has a twelve inch pipe that's piped into the drainage ditch. So that we can catch nuisance water from there, put it into the, and then put it into the the drainage channel. There are some other, there's another. Possibility of us. Increasing the the curb height in this location that of interest. We'll be looking to do in that as well. The issue we have there is there is those those places, some of them, I think all of them. Have basements that go underneath the the sidewalk there, so we'll have to look into making scene if that's a possibility that we can do.
We have a timeframe on. The catch basin.
We've already begun the process, we had it blue staked, we we went and looked at the utilities there, already started the the process.
Thank you.
That's all, that's all we have, sir, thank you.
All right. Well, it comes to the last. Item which. Of course. Was added at the last minute. So. This will be out of number twelve, but this is. Accepting the resignation from council member Joan Hanson. Just wanted to say I I appreciate all the work that she did. I had to go back and remind myself that. I came off of my seven years of council. On December second, two thousand fourteen, at the same night that she got sworn in. And so she's been there since then, so that's, you know, looking over six years for that, so. That. That's a good period for for any one of us and I I'm. Very pleased and happy that. That she gave us all that. Time and effort and dedication to our city, so. Would take comments for everybody and before we accept her resignation, then we will talk about. How we'll go about the replacement, so. Comments? Anybody? Okay, Leslie, thanks.
I'll just say that Joan was mostly pleasant to work with. And I will miss her.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll add a few comments because I got to work with her twice. She's been around for two or two out of three of of my shifts here at the city. And I I just, I just want to, I want to tell you right from the beginning, she was straightforward, no nonsense. She came over to see me as soon as I got here both times and. Was willing to give me the benefit of her, the wisdom of her time. In office and 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 I will always be grateful. Two years ago when she stepped forward and. And looked at the budget from a very critical perspective and helped us. Cut was, what was a seven hundred thousand dollar. Deficiency in 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 the general fund down to about a three hundred thousand dollar deficiency, which as you know is a workable point for us. And so, so and so Joan, if you're listening, thank you, appreciate your time in office and don't be a stranger.
Thank you for that. City manager, welcome, go ahead, Frank.
Yes, Joan was a work with from my experience, always had a. Had a good attitude, you know, was. Or a joke to tell, whatever. I think that she will still remain active in some manner, I'm sure she will. In the community, even though she's getting off the council.
Thanks for that, so. The way our. Charter. Is once we accept this resignation tonight. We can't, we'll put on that. A notice for to take applicants for somebody would like to to fill that slot. That can, we can't take any action for fifteen days, but we must make action before thirty days. So looking forward, I'm hoping everybody can hang in there and hopefully. On our first of August, we can. You know, get together and hold our some meetings, I'm hoping to do it in person. I would like to interview. These applications in person versus online, I think we might get a better idea and then we'll we'll. We'll go into executive session, so. If everybody can can try to be with us. For at least the Tuesday, the August third council meeting. I think that would be an appropriate point and we'll, I'll try to keep the agenda light or or maybe I'll do a special one right. Within those two days, you know, right around that, the first part of August. Will you be back, Frank, by by August, first of August?
Yes, yes, I will be, yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes, I will be.
Thanks, great. Anybody else comment on going forward? Anybody else, all right? So I've got so many screens going here, I feel like. I'm giving a presentation which I don't want to do. Here we go, all right. So I move that we accept. The resignation of council member Joan Hanson. And that. I move that we set a date. Of. August third. To appoint a replacement council member for this position. It could be. August fourth or or but preferably be August third. There we go. I'll get with Ashley and have you contact everybody, it would be, I really think it's important for us all to try to be, to make that one, so I'm hoping that will work for everybody. So that's my motion, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just because I know there's folks watching. Is, would you? Would you like that? If if someone wishes to apply for the vacant position, would you like it done by letter and where would you like it sent?
Sure. Would like a formal letter sent to our city clerk, and if you'd like to attach a small bio, that would be great also. And then, of course, there'll be our public interview process at the selection date and which I'm hoping to have happen. You know, at. Five P M, five thirty on the on the third, everybody can attend.
And yeah, just a couple of other quick things, Mr. Mayor, just so for the benefit of the people listening.
You've done this, I haven't.
Well. Not for a long time. The. They they need to be a resident of Ward two. That should go without saying, but I'll just mention it. And the other thing is that. Don't wait till August first to get your letter in to the city clerk. Get it in as quickly as possible.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to say real quickly, and I'll get to you, Joni, is I should have mentioned this, it's just getting late, I guess, I'm fading. Is the term, now she was just elected, which is a four year term, but this would only be until the next general election. Then whoever you could sign up to run for that seat, it would be a two year seat at that point, so. At the next general election, there'll be a two year seat and a four year seat up for election in Ward two. That's how that would work, so there'd be about a year and a half that we change into first of December. All right, Joni.
How long do they have to live in the ward? That was asked.
I think there's just a requirement, maybe, well, I I don't want to say out of tune, I don't have my. I think they have to be a member or a city, or I'm sorry, a resident for a year. But I don't know if it has to be a resident of the particular ward.
And a screaming yes.
I think you're right, a year, and yes, they have to be a resident of that ward.
But I don't think there's a requirement of the year in the ward, just just a resident.
We will check. Now we'll check with the charter and we'll put it out there.
It'll all be part of the notice that'll be placed out.
But but yeah, if, yeah. It's at least a year.
Well, that much, that much we know, but whether it's. War two or not. Okay, so. I have a motion and a second on the floor, I'll take a vote, Ashley.
Council member Jacomoino.
Hi.
Council member Davis. Council member Johns.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Temp Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Butch.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. So. One last item, and this will be a good item. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Joe. We're trying to do email and I I don't know where we were.
Yeah, I was just trying to pull up the the, to answer that question real quick from the from the charter. For regular council members, the requirement is is that council members shall have physically resided in the city of Bisbee. And the ward from which they were nominated and elected and or appointed. For at least one year preceding the date of such election or appointment.
So, okay, one year in both resident and and war. Okay, thanks for that clarification, that helps us out. So now I'm going to go to you, we're going to hold an executive session, item number thirteen, but. Things matters have not come up to where we would be required, is that correct, Joe?
I don't have additional information on that that matter at this point, we'll reserve that and we'll keep it on the agenda for the next meeting and see if we have some updates. But no need for executive session tonight.
See, that's good news. Okay, guys, thank you, everybody for hanging in there, it was a good night, we got some good important stuff done and and. I want to invite anybody that wants that's lives, has lived in Ward two for a year that would. Want to serve us and work with us. Feel free to apply, get a letter in within, you know, at least the first fifteen days and then and then we'll go from there. Frank, adjournment, yay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn in a second, by Frank, a second by Leslie, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, eyes have it, we are adjourned, good night, everybody.
Oh, Tweez is open again.